Please stand in the place, Luke. Led by Mr. Brooks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and my government, with all liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the board meeting for November twenty-fourth, which is Thanksgiving week. I wish you all a very happy, happy holiday. Have a great Thanksgiving. Just a reminder, it's emergency exit, go six steps out the rear of the building. Try to get on your vehicle. Please do not leave until so directed by emergency service personnel. This is an unspoken building, so if you must, do it someplace else, but not here. Please, Mr. Brooks, motion to board minutes.
Yes, good evening and happy Thanksgiving to everybody. Just one approval tonight for the board meeting minutes of November tenth, two thousand fourteen, please.
Motion to accept the present.
As there's little change, so. On page one, there's a sentence that's repeated. Therefore, the internal proposal for their funding is reported, etc., etc.
Any other changes? We should addition. Motion to accept. Has any changes? Motion second.
Second.
On fifth.
Aye.
Good evening, everybody. I have a couple of things tonight. We'll start with the bills first. Bills for the period of November twelfth through the twenty-fourth totaled one million, three hundred thousand, three oh two ninety-nine. The five largest bills is number one, U.S. Aid Retirement, eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, ninety-nine. I'm gonna talk about that earlier. New York State Health Insurance, one oh eight, sixty-eighty, fifty-one. December Health Insurance. Rosemar for paving Oxbow, ninety-nine thousand, six hundred. PSC and G alarm for lighting, Villagewide, fourteen thousand, nine sixty-six, thirty-one. And fundamental business, seventy-six thousand, seven seventeen, seventy-five for the recovery services. And that's for our court fees. That's to go after people who haven't paid you tickets. We have a service that we use and that's their piece that they get. One million, one twenty-two, nine fifty-three, fifty-seven. I shouldn't say that. That's the total. And of that, they, that's what they collect for us. And of that, the fee is like seventy-five million dollars. So that's what that is. I have approval, please.
Motion to accept the present. Motion. Any questions? All in favor?
Okay. In front here, we have the cash balances as of October thirty-first, that's the year information. But I would like to request, I would like to request, it was under the mayors section, but I'd like to request approval to set a public hearing to consider overriding the two percent tax cap for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen fiscal year as established in the General and Municipal Law three C. And just to go back to that eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar bill that we have, that's one of the reasons why we need to get the tax Pierce set up in case we have to do it. Those expenses, we have no control over. In two thousand and four, our annual employer contribution was fifty-four thousand dollars. And now it's eight hundred and twenty-three thousand. So I think it's prudent to set, to set us up to Pierce the cap. If we don't have to, we won't do it. We do have surplus that we always use to reduce our taxes. And if we can get below two percent, we'll do everything in our, no, we can't. But if we can't, we need to have it replaced. So we don't get a prob, have a problem with the state. So I think it's important that we set the hearing and do that and move forward. That's my recognition.
Can I hear a motion? No, Ron, I was gonna read the date. I'm sorry.
December eighth, you want?
December eighth, okay.
Now, that money's gone up because of lack of performance on the...
Definitely the interest rate environment has been so low that there's no returns on the investments. And, you know, just in general, expenses have risen and that's basically where it is. Our rates have been so low for years. I mean, you know, every three, four years, they say rates are going up. You know, I'm a banker. I look at these things. We're probably gonna see a rate increase over the next two years, but, you know.
I thought that I had read that the contribution was gonna be a little bit lower this year. Is that in fact...
It's not that much higher than it was last year, but it's not, it's still way up. You never gonna see fifty-four thousand dollars again.
Yeah, last year, we put five hundred thousand dollars on the surplus. And all that five hundred thousand dollars...
It was six, it was six hundred, that was.
Six hundred, right, that surplus. And we paid close to eight hundred thousand last year.
Well, where does the state invest that money? Am it a little interest rate sensitive? Are they prohibited from anything a little bit more aggressive?
They're highly regulated in terms of what, as a state pension fund, they're very highly regulated. They can't buy crazy stuff.
Put it in a standard enforcement system?
Probably not. Or at least not, not a lot.
If we go back over the last six or seven years, if retirement had stayed at a percentage of increase of the fifty-four thousand commensurate with the cost of living, we would've never raised taxes. We would've been taking money out of surplus. You know?
Fifteen hundred percent of this.
And that's why industry has gone to four-oh-one K class rather than, you know, pension plans like, like many years ago. More control. When you're in that type of plan.
And that's totally determined by the state?
Yes, it's all state-controlled. We have no saying whether to invest.
Do they have options at the state level to make changes that would allow people to invest their own life?
I don't, I think it just wasn't on.
They could legislate it. They'd have to legislate it.
There's other stuff they could've legislated. You know, I guess go back to it. I'll just, so fast in a second. In two thousand, in the Potatian McCall, they took tier four, which is contributory to three percent on anybody that was in tier four. And they changed the law where now if you're in tier four, after ten years, you don't have to contribute anymore. You know, considering the fact that, especially in education, the government, people haven't been hiring to the degree they had in, you know, the nineties, two thousands, and early two thousands, probably eighty percent of the people that are in tier four now or seventy percent are over ten years. So nobody's contributing anymore. When you speak to the governor, when you speak to the legislature about, well, you legislatively changed it from contributory to non-contributory over ten years. My sense is you can then change back legislatively with the three percent. Maybe you don't go back with one shot. You do it percent a year, over three years, so people don't get hurt. But when I get back and I saw the board, the New York Conference of Matters and the meetings that we've had, you hear the same thing. It's just the Constitution. The Constitution, New York State Constitution says you can't change a benefit. Well, it's not a benefit. It's a contribution. And when you say, well, why don't you have a judge decide? That's not what the governor wants. So we let pay implicit three percent. Would it change eight twenty-two? Maybe you're knocking down a six fifty. But you're knocking down a six fifty, we don't raise taxes. We keep it at eight twenty-two. Because we don't know what next year is gonna be. Is it, is it gonna be eight twenty-two again? Or, like you said, you know, they're talking about it going down. We don't know. And that's, that's, that's where the wild card is in this whole thing. That is the wild card. Motion. Second. Please hand four of the pages to present.
Uh, December eighth?
The public hearing on December eighth, consider overriding the two percent tax cap for the twenty fifteen, sixteen fiscal year. All in favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
So I have this time.
For this settlement of the tax, actually, I argue, it's more like J.J. Estilio really will see the amount of cash flow.
Uh, they are two to go.
Motion. Obviously handled by Carol Stewart. The iteration is so small. Motion to maybe not lose the care of the dead.
Second.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Mayor, trustees, Cecile.
Mr. Cross.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Dennis Smith with the BID report. As I mentioned, this was at the last meeting, two weeks ago, the benches and the trash receptacles to finish up the project on his name were at EPW. I'm happy to report that they've been placed within the last few weeks. They look great out there. That concludes the beautification portion of the grand cycle that they're working. It also was the last piece of the puzzle that we had to put in for the East Main Street sidewalk project. So it came out good. It looks great. I've sent the, you know, those invoices away as a federal reimbursement. So hopefully, we'll be, we'll be getting that back soon. Just a little bit more on the New York Main Street grant, with the exception of two projects I had mentioned at the last meeting. The previous seven projects that we did, plus the streets gate, have been either reimbursed or have been submitted for reimbursement. So there's only two projects out there that are rapidly coming to a close. Once that happens, we'll, we'll send it for reimbursement on them. Just a little sidebar on what happened. We have, it'll be a total of nine projects. And when they all come to fruition, it will be somewhere around six hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollars in improvements that have enabled them from the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in seed money that we had. And that's not including the twenty thousand dollars for the streets gate project. So it'd be about six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, over a hundred and seventy-one percent above the two fifty that we had gotten. So we did pretty well with that. It's a, it'll, it'll be, it'll count the seven buildings and eleven storefronts. So hopefully, we know. Moving on to the security cameras. Meeting again with Seth Marcus tomorrow at the theater, three P.M. We're gonna do the final walkthrough. We've had a little, as I said at the last meeting, problem with the West End as far as the implementation of cameras. But I don't wanna delay it anymore. So we're gonna have the final walkthrough. And we're looking next week, somewhere between December first, December third, to start implementation of putting the cameras up and getting the systems online and getting them rolling. I did email this past weekend. I was going back and forth with Rob Scialzo. Can I take his using that camera right now? But he's, he's, he's supposed to hear more about what we wanna do. So when Seth is here tomorrow, we're gonna view that camera as well. See if it can be incorporated into our program. And then we'll get over to Rob with Seth and myself. And if he's willing, and he's got some questions about, you know, who gets to view it, who maintains it, you know, questions that should be asked. But if we can put it into our, our system, then we'll meet with Rob and we'll try to make that happen. Oh, yeah, the hotspots. Since we are a hotspot community, actually, maybe if we didn't have a hotspot somewhere, we could just, you know, kind of utilize what we do have as, as hotspots. If we didn't have a hardwire, I should say. But I was informed that they have to be hardwired. The device communications cannot be in a hotspot. Given the fact that we are a hot, a hotspot community, if that was needed, do you think offerable, or capable is what I should say, would acquiesce and help us out with that?
I would think so, but I don't know what.
So what kind of speed are we running?
These cameras, they, they have to be hardwired to the system. We can't, we can't have a Wi-Fi connection. They have to, you know, they have to be wired to a, to a wire for the device communications. But if we get one that's out there without, kinda like in a satellite position, where there isn't available cable, you know, existing, I think that perhaps we should bring something out of the cable issue. We can, we can talk about that later. Everyone seeing the Christmas decorations? They're up. They're looking good. The bid has ordered five hundred additional wreaths that we'll put up this, this year. The Chamber of Commerce actually referred me six additional wreaths, which we're very appreciative of. So we have more wreaths to work with. We should've added last year. But we have five new poles on Main Street. So we're still short about three on South Ocean Avenue. What we're gonna look to do at the next bid board meeting is order another five in February. And we're also gonna look at the skyline downs, because back in the day, we used to have three of them. We now only have one, the one that's down by Barton Bilch. The other two have just gotten to the point where you can't use any longer. So with that, we, if we get the approval from the government in February, we do it in February because they're one-third off. We'll order one to put back up with the, with the post office spot for next year than it happened for this year. But I'll, I'll keep you posted on that. And really, that's all I have to record. Just on a personal note, on behalf of the bid board of directors, I wanna wish everybody here a happy Thanksgiving. Happy and a safe Thanksgiving. Are there any questions today? Thank you.
Dennis, thank you very much, and also be with your family.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'll begin by just wrapping up our holiday vote parade. Went off with a big success. The weather gods again blessed us with a beautiful, warm night. It was funny that the theme of this year's parade was a tropical Christmas. And certainly, the weather compared to last year, this year was definitely tropical in comparison to what it was last year. But I will note, announce the winners of the awards. The best use of lights was a boat named La Vida y Bella. It was the nice lit-up boat that had the big Merry Christmas sign on it. And that was actually, all those decorations were actually handmade on that boat, which was, I found very fairly impressive. The best use of sound, and I think we should just really name this award, the Hampton House Award, because they win it every year. I think everybody knows them, because they're the ones that always have a live band on their little houseboat as they go by. They always do a wonderful job, and of course, they win Best Sound every year. And closest to theme this year was a boat called Stormy Sea. Small, little, I think nineteen sixty-eight Electro. It's a classic little boat. Did a nice job decorating it. And the winner of the People's Choice, which was voted on the night before by people who visited the Marina's on Saturday, was the Dead Wrecking. And Dead Wrecking, it happened to be the Santa boat that was chosen as the People's Choice of favorite voting. So again, great event. Thanks to the village for everything with the support and getting all the help from Joe, getting all the barricades down and the garbage cans. And, as I said, Mr. Brooks has helped assist us down at the sand pit yesterday as well. And to Mr. Krieger and the Krieger family for decorating the ferry, getting the Holy Angels Regional School and bringing the ferry back into that parade. It hadn't been in the parade in a while. A little parade. Hope you had a good one.
How many years, what year was this for the parade?
Twenty-first. Twenty-first year. And nineteen ninety-three was the first year, so.
There was a big crowd out there.
Yeah, this was probably one of the biggest in recent years. Of course, the weather had a lot to do with that.
It was probably the warmest one of the long months.
Exactly, exactly. So that definitely made a difference.
Oh, Sansford was packed, Warhouse, every place.
Yeah, I was at Finn's, and it was the biggest parade I had seen down there since I've been doing the stuff down there. I helped too. I know the Honeytins Boat Parade that they do was postponed because of construction. So I have a feeling maybe some people who missed out wanted to come out for that. So thank you again for all that. So next on the agenda this Saturday is Small Business Saturday. A big day that we really nationally is focused on people shopping in the local downtowns and supporting their local merchants. So we do have a few events planned for that day. We have the Tri Valley Brass Band performing at Capital One Plaza. The Boys and Girls Club Steel Band will be performing, most likely by Patchogue Theater. And we have the SJC Sharps, which is the St. Joseph's College Female Glee Club. That'll be doing some caroling up and down the street as well. The Patchogue Theater has opened up the lobby. So the Chamber's gonna have a holiday information center. And there, we're gonna have, we just secured Santa Claus. I got to talk to him last night at the boat parade. So Santa said he'll do some free photos in the lobby between one and four. So we invite everybody to come down for that. And we're also offering free gift wrapping for anybody who purchased anything in Patchogue. Just bring the receipt and we'll wrap that gift for you for free. That's all at the Patchogue Theater lobby between one and four o'clock. Right, and after that, we're gonna keep that Small Business Saturday message throughout the whole holiday season this year. So we'll be following up with a special promotion on December the sixth, which we're calling Discount Card Day, and promoting the joint discount card that we do with Belleport. We'll have a little booth on, on the sidewalks, making sure all patrons have the discount card. The following weekend, we're gonna be doing what we're calling Shop South Shore on the Downtown Express, where we're gonna have trolley service between Oakdale and Belleport. And I'll make stops at Bayport and Blue Point and Patchogue and Sabre and Patchogue along the way. And then we're gonna follow it up on the seventh, the eighteenth with some late-night shopping, where stores will stay open till at least eight o'clock on that evening, so people can get some of their shopping done for that as well. So we have a, we really got a lot of great events. There's no reason why that you can't do all your Christmas shopping right here in downtown Patchogue. And we certainly hope everybody does. And I do wanna do also do a shout-out, you know, in talking about the Christmas decorations and in support of the Christmas parade coming up this Saturday. The Chamber was able to secure the tree this year, as we have in the past, thanks to a generous donation from a member of the community. And I'm happy to announce that that member of the community who supplies the tree was the Biscardi family. And I think everybody knows Valerie Biscardi, former CDA director. She, she's the one who contacted us and donated a tree from her yard to be the Patchogue Christmas tree this year. So we thank the Biscardi family for that. I do wanna make, oh, and I also know the mayor will probably give a little plug for this, but I will add a plug too, that this Wednesday, Thanksgiving Eve, is another one of our great community events. It's our interfaith service with all the different ministers from the different parishes and the different denominations come together for an open service. And that's taking place on this Wednesday, Thanksgiving Eve, at the Lutheran Church of Our Savior. That's the Lutheran Church on Jane Avenue.
The Way of Death?
Yeah, yeah, I see that. I guess it's just off the Roebuck Boulevard, just north of Roebuck Boulevard. I believe that starts at, is it seven? Seven, it is seven. Thank you. That was a chance. And then I also wanna mention tomorrow night, I invite everybody to come down to a general membership meeting. It's at two, six o'clock at barbecue. Mary Rousseau is gonna do a nice presentation about what Coab has been up to lately. And one of our members, Serve Pro, that actually is a emergency service company that helps businesses prepare for emergencies and the like, will be doing a presentation as well. And unless anybody else has got any questions for me, that's my call.
How do you get a discount card?
Um, well, there's a few different ways you can do it. Right, you go to our website. You'll see the discount card logo. So you can just click there and sign up for it on the website, and it'll be mailed to you.
Is it good the whole season or only certain weeks?
It's, it's good for all year. It's good for, you'll also see on that same page, you can click and get a list of all the member businesses that offer discount and what that, that offer is. And I think we're up to at least about forty or fifty businesses that have already signed on, given ten percent off with the card or different things to that, to that nature. You can certainly stop by the Chamber office and get one. If you gave us a phone call, we'll send you one. And we'll have a booth out that day, you know, a visible booth where people could come and just sign up for one that day on December the sixth. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. Oh, yes, a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
You too.
Thank you, guys. Oh, you know what? Thank you. I do wanna put a plug out, because we are helping with that too. December the seventh, right, it's Sunday, the seventh, the seventh, is the Houses of Worship Tour. And that's gonna be from two to four o'clock. You start at the Garden Club on the corner of Terry Street and South Ocean Avenue. The only thing they ask for as admission is a non-parishable food item, so for their food drive. So that I have to do to go on it. And you can, it's designed as a walking tour. It is very walkable to go to these Houses of Worship. But there is, thanks to the, the Greater Patchogue Foundation has provided funding to have a trolley available for those who, walking is a hardship. They will be driven around with that trolley to each Houses of Worship. So it's always, you know, a good thing to do to keep in mind what the holidays are all about. Thank you.
Thank you. One of those large bills, the fundamental, this tree sort of is not seven thousand, six thousand, seventeen. It should've been seven thousand, six thousand, seven five. Seven five.
Motion to accept changes, present.
Motion.
Considering the fact we were on our interfaith service and Thanksgiving, Pastor Walters. Have to say, do you have a couple of comments?
About that? I have some comments, but it's not particularly related. It's related to something other than that.
I'll let you speak now, out of order.
Oh, well, I appreciate that. For the record, he's letting you speak out of order. I vote two, man. What was that? I'm missing. I'm glad I did, huh? If you're going to be, my name is Reverend Dwight Walter, pastor, Congregational Church of Patchogue. Oldest non-living thing within fifty miles. If you're going to be speaking, I think you might not be there at the interfaith service. We're gonna go back to what we did several years ago, which is two minutes per person, including either yourself or any representative that you might send.
I will be there over the two minutes. One break after four.
I wanted to make a, a, a brief comment and then possibly coupled with some suggestions and a plea for help from you, Mr. Mayor, and from the assembly here, as well as in the audience. It began when I was making a note to myself, and I said, "I look forward to the day when pouring an ice bucket over your head or inviting people to ring a bell in the church are not necessary in exchange for donation to feed the hungry of our community." I look forward to the day when people realize that churches with soup kitchens are not feeding their poor, but are actually feeding our poor. I don't think there's a single person that we feed that's a member of the church and less than one-third of the persons serving in our church, which we've been doing for twenty-eight years, are members of our church. So it's really the community's poor that we are really, really struggling to continue to feed. If you can imagine any of us, I don't care what you want within this community, if you're gonna feed forty to seventy people a week, you can have a harder time doing it. The poor are as much a part of our community as the wealthy. They might, they might not be as welcome. They might not be as visible. They might not be the kind of people you wanna invite to a cocktail party. Or some people might not even want to invite them to the church. But they're as much a part of the community. And I look forward to the day when charity and compassion and benevolence are built into every endeavor that we undertake as a community, not just to the confines of the time between Thanksgiving and New Year's. I look forward to the day when every arts organization, street festival, publicly-funded theater, and when possible, government organization include and promote benevolence into their programs at a time when we've had severe cutbacks. We used to receive money from FEMA. We don't, haven't received a nickel for years. INN, Interfaith Nutrition Network, will help us. But we're trying to repay, we are repaying the soup kitchen at a cost of a couple thousand bucks. We got three hundred dollars out of them. The rest, we have to just ice buckets, walk up and down Main Street whenever we can. To the chase here. That said, I do want to commend the village, because I walked by the Toy for Tod's box. It is empty, but it's early. But I'm glad that the Toy for Tod's box is there, because I notice things like that. I also want to thank the advance, particularly the editor and the Lucy who's here, who has done a great job either herself or assigning people to cover not only things that happened at my church, but benevolent things that happened for organizations they could never afford advertising or anything to get their, their things done. She's good at lifting those things up as well. Helping the unseen to be visible. She's helping the powerless to have access to some sort of decency and some sort of respect. I wanna thank the Chamber of Commerce and David Kennedy in particular for their support in helping us to promote some of these events. I want to thank Mary Pontieri, who, did I say Mary Pontieri? Let me not confuse you with somebody in your family. Mary Pontieri for having come to the soup kitchen a few years ago. And when he wasn't eating the food that we were supposed to be serving, he did a great job. Bonnie Underwood has been cooking that food down there for many, many years. And also, I want to thank the Patchogue Theater for, for the Performing Arts that have an ongoing food collection in their collection box. And then I wanna promote one event, which is on December twelve at the Patchogue Theater for Performing Arts. I have been asked to essentially produce, but I was requested, it was the request of the theater that I do this, a choral festival, brass ensemble, and community sing-along, which is a benefit for the Patchogue Neighbors Inn, which is the conglomerate of, INN and Interfaith Nutrition Network is island-wide. Patchogue Neighbors Inn is a five soup kitchen, particularly in the greater Patchogue area. Obviously, we're two villages down. We're right in the village and a couple others are. But it's going to be three choruses totaling about a hundred and twenty voices, a thirteen-piece... a thirteen-piece brass band. And the hundred and twenty people coming together with the thirteen-piece brass band, and they will be singing the Hallelujah Chorus of Humble Science just at one piece. The music is inclusive of secular music, Winter Wonderland. I would rather shoot myself than sing Jingle Bells. But, and then we of course do have some Christmas music in there as well. So it's respecting of all faith and non-faith traditions, which I think might reflect a greater community. And the proceeds from that will benefit INN. So the soup kitchens in the series. So I'm really asking if you can help promote this on the village website or personally, if you do Facebook or anything like that. The tickets are for sale between nine to twenty-five dollars at the theater box office. Jack knows more about this than I do. I don't sell tickets, we're not selling it to the church. This is a Patchar Theater for the Performing Arts event, which will really help. In addition to that, I have just a few things off the top of my head that I can think of that would be nice if somehow, when they're looking for permits, and I don't know governance, I, if you wanna know something about the ecclesiology of theocracy, I can tell you, but I don't know about getting a permit to have somebody doing something at short run, I don't. But I was thinking a live after five, New Year's Eve, Pac-Mac, offering a dollar off a ticket price for the theater if you bring in a container of non-parishable food. What I've found is that people love this, and everybody looks good. When I ask people, rather than beating up people in church who give, 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 give all the time, if I ask somebody in the community, "Could you give us something?", I ask for one, they bring six. I've been really astonished. And I brag about this community wherever I go, and I travel widely. So I would leave that up to you in conclusion, and I thank you for your time. And you could probably tell me much better, you have better ideas about what I can be doing, because I'm, you know, walking up and down Main Street also, and sort of beguiling and looking at, wondering how much money is gonna be made on New Year's Eve if we do a haul drop. You know, I can't imagine, I so desperately want to be a restaurant owner instead of a putzi congregational minister, you know? And I'm thinking, wouldn't it be nicer if somehow we could just get something at this time? But we come up and we talk about wonderful things. BID at six hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Shopping, Small Business Saturday, on and on and on. And just as I was taught and trained to look for the least of these in the community, because you cannot, no community can survive chronically hungry people. I hate to think what I would do to feed my own children. You know, I'd hate to think, if push comes to shove, what I would resort to if I had to. And people, when hungry, they can't feed themselves, they can't feed their children, they can get ugly immediately. We all know that. So it's a great service that many of us are doing in the community. And with your help, I'm sure that we'll be able to do even better. And I thank you for your time, and I join the chorus of Happy Thanksgiving.
You took that, you're a pretty good person. Then we all see them on the street every day. And so many crowds who walk in. Then all of a sudden, go to the other side of the street. You know, so I think it's maybe, you need to begin to look at what we see and not what we don't wanna see.
One misconception is that everybody who goes to the soup kitchens homeless. It's not true. And when you went down serving, I said, "Well, you're not gonna get many, you're not gonna get any votes down here, Mr. Mayor, but God loves you for doing this." And somebody came up and said, "Mr. Mayor, I've got your back." Remember that? It was one of the guests. A lot of them are just underemployed. Or when the rental mortgage is due, they eat that week in the soup kitchens. And then the twice-a-month paycheck, the other paycheck when rent isn't due, they do whatever they do. And they will go out maybe and, you know, splurge on a hamburger or something like that. Am I supposed to ask for questions before I just leave it on?
Thank you, Reverend. Have a great holiday, and I'll see you Wednesday night. My two minutes, that could be three.
I have my thing timer.
You got it. Very good. Deputy Mayor, over here.
Thank you, Mayor. Very short brief tonight. Mrs. Seal, I'd just like to know, when new village parking permits will be available?
I'm good authority that they should be in sometime during next week.
Okay, because I will be doing another letter to the residents of the village, talking about parking meters. We're working on them. Trusty Keys and the Highway Department are working on the signs. The number, lots of number. Moving with Parkline right now, working on the Persos, which is the programming of the machines. Devo's, sorry, Devo. Doing the programming of the machines. And it's a bit complicated, to be honest with you. So, again, we'll be doing a letter sometime, probably early December, out to the residents of the Village of Patchar, explaining how the parking lot is gonna work in the parking lot. Similar to what we did last year.
Just with the Devo's about the Sunday issue.
Yes, that's all taken care of. Yes, we are programming the meters to not accept any money on Sundays, which was something, it was accepting money, so we changed that. And we're moving some meters off of Main Street, putting some in the parking lots, moving a few into the downtown a little bit closer, so there's a couple gaps. The one across the street from you marked, there's a gap between four corners of the library. We're putting one right in the middle there.
Put one right behind my door, but I'll get wet.
There is one right next to your door, yours. What else did I, you make me lose my concentration. They're gonna be installed shortly, so everybody be prepared. Yes.
Are they Main Street?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Yeah, the time limit on Main Street is gonna be increased to two hours. So that'll, that'll give people more opportunity. Parking meters in the back, just once again, unlimited parking. You can park in those spaces all day long, as long as you wanna put money into it.
No, we don't want that.
What's that? After five, after five o'clock. There are eight times free.
Right.
What about after six?
What's that?
What about after six?
Unlimited parking, you can park there all night if you want.
What?
You can park there all night if you wanna keep putting money in it.
No, I'm talking about, what can't we do after six, DM? We're open till six.
Yeah, I think it's six o'clock.
It is six o'clock.
Oh, oh, yeah, it is. Because we don't do our thing.
Will they exempt the money at five? We accept the money at five o'clock.
Then why can't we accept it at six? I'm just, this is just my business partner driving me nuts with it.
Let's get this thing off the ground.
The back lot meters will not be deployed till? January.
January, yes.
Oh, Jan, okay.
So we got the holiday season.
Yeah, it's not gonna be during the holiday, we're gonna watch it during the holiday season. We've made, you know, we've listened to everybody. We made a lot of adjustments to the plan. Again, it's just like the on-street.
You need bigger signs.
Trusty Keys has some signs that will be huge.
Tiny.
No, we're gonna change our whole sign plan in the parking lot. It's a lot different, it's gonna be a lot different. Fewer signs are bigger, bigger signs.
A question was posted that I didn't know the answer recently about handicapped spaces and that they shouldn't be metered. Is that, can you explain that? Because I really hadn't thought about it, so I didn't know how to answer.
I can explain.
Okay.
Oh.
There is a special dispensation from the governor's office, right?
Well, it's actually through the state DM thing. And we did extensive research on it. Handicapped spaces, handicapped individuals are expected to pay the meter. The only exception, and you do need a special permit aside from the blue or red placard, is if you are physically incapable of putting money in the meter with your hands, but you also have to be the driver. So if it's somebody that only has hand control, it's, so it's very prohibitive. And I've been asked the question several times by handicapped individuals, as well as other individuals. And that was, that's a state regulation, that's not as much as a casual.
So it's not something that we can exempt ourselves from?
Oh, we could if we wanted to.
Believe by legislation, because I've been told.
If you're in the parking area, it'd be very difficult to say you can and you can't.
I agree. And I'm sure anybody who owns a business here in the village noticed people who park in handicapped spaces. Not all of them are.
Yeah, so. I know, I know she parked next to it.
Right. I get requests from every organization to be able to park free in the Village of Patchar. And, you know, handicapped, I understand that sometimes it's an issue. And if it is an issue and they can't pay, and they can't put money in the meter, and they get a ticket, then they clear it forward and plead their case with the judge. So handicapped will need to park, volunteers will be paying to park, first responders, veterans, everybody.
If you choose to park in a metered spot.
If you choose to park in a metered spot.
There's plenty of free spaces.
There's plenty of free spaces, yeah, that people can walk to. So just keep an eye out, after the holidays, we're gonna launch this again. And thanks to the advance, has been very, very good at getting word out. But we will be doing a letter to all the residents. And residents will be able to park free with the resident sticker.
So the parking lot is not?
In the parking lot, it's not on Main Street. And that's all I have, but everybody have a Happy Thanksgiving.
Do you have one?
I have one more approval. I've had a very good time.
It's only one day.
I know, yeah. Request approved to set a public hearing to consider renewing the special permit for United Storage, now known as Cube Smart, located at 257 Wingman Avenue in my backyard.
Have they been neighbors yet?
They've been pretty good neighbors lately. I've had a few little issues, but they've cleared them up pretty quickly. But I'll make a motion to set a public hearing.
Sorry.
December eighth?
December eighth.
December eighth. Most of you saying it all, babe?
And again, David, David's gone.
He left.
Oh, very, it was really cool to be at the parade last night. You got a good idea of how many people were on the shore. You know, between Sandspit, Warhouse, On Water, New On Waterfront, Harbor Crab, where things, every place. Tremendous amount of people watching both parade. Beautiful night, so a lot of fun. Can't wait for next year. Thank you. Trusty Keys?
Mr. Mayor, I will, members, ladies and gentlemen, Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. I trust you all dusted the House Westmont records up.
Did you listen to that?
I did, I did listen to it. That's very good, very good indeed. I have extra copies of it. Jack mentioned a little bit, I just loved a little bit of what Jack said about the sign. We are going to try to make them in-house this year after the parking lot, so that should save us a considerable amount. We're gonna change the structure a little bit, the layout, so eliminate, hopefully eliminate the abundance of signs done that we have in our parking lots. Cut down the number of signs we have. And I expect that there'll be a little bit of the growing pains of people getting used to seeing just, you know, hopefully they'll see two big signs, it's got a forty-seven little ones. A few meetings ago, we approved our salt for services renewal in Southern County for three years at a time. I mentioned that we were not too crazy about the tonnage that we were getting. We did negotiate it up to fourteen hundred tons, so we are satisfied now. It's a good deal for us. I think the initial, because I gave a bit, so I just, my foot just not that well.
Joe, I'm sorry, but I haven't gotten the final meeting.
Still, okay.
Is it with the county?
I spoke with Superintendent Dean, he's, the county knows it, they're just processing it. But he did receive an initial delivery of salt, so he feels comfortable.
It is the county.
It's the county, yeah.
And they'll send it.
And just two things, actually, on my wish list, I'm requesting approval to participate in the National Joint Powers Alliance. This gives us easier and better purchasing power. It's like our county contract and Boise's contract. It's just another contract, another avenue that we can go to, go procurements and services and stuff, makes it a lot easier.
Motion.
And it doesn't cost anything to the village, right? So that's correct.
Motion.
Motion. Second. I'm requesting approval.
Is there a list, is there a list of products that are available on that?
The, I don't have it, but yeah, I'm sure. Yeah, truly, it's expensive, I don't have much, I don't have.
Full products?
Everything from toilet paper to the pillows.
That complies with the state general municipal law requirement? Your state, I mean, is approves it as eligible?
Yes.
Motion, second. Okay.
And it's not on the agenda, but I'm requesting approval to hire Rosemar Construction Company to pave, Millen pave, Gillette Avenue, Ketchum Avenue, and Westlake Drive. Of course, not exceed, let's make a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Second.
Aye. And I believe that's all I have.
Trusty, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow trustees, Councilor Eaton, Mr. Crozal. Ladies and gentlemen, I hope everybody has a happy and safe holiday. Oh, Clark, sue, I'm sorry. Now, I consider her a trustee for some reason, I don't know why. But I really do.
That was ten years ago.
Yeah, I know, right? Real quick, I'd like to set a public hearing date for December eighth, and that is to amend Resolution 210-15 to raise the building code for FEMA and to come into compliance from BF plus two to BF plus four. So there's a motion to make a public hearing.
Good. Okay.
December eighth, please.
December eighth, please. And I'll have P S A, senior building inspector, so if you can answer any questions or? And other than that, that's about it. The building department's gonna be getting busy. They've been in contact with the architects for the assisted living.
Oh, really?
So they've been working some details out and getting down to business. So in the spring, they will break around and they'll be forth and running.
They got their approvals from New York State Health Department?
I believe so, yeah, it's written that way. When I spoke with Peter, he said that he told the architects to, everybody's on the same page to get moving. So it's good news. And other than that, that's it.
Justin Burke.
Wish everybody a safe and Happy Thanksgiving. That's all I have.
You have one more thing?
No, you already won.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this was a request made to me today by a resident, meter revenue.
Oh, there you go.
What?
I just let everybody know that the village, since January of 2014, which we really didn't roll it out full-blown till, you know, March and April, the village has received about a hundred and forty thousand dollars in revenue on the parking meters alone on Main Street. That's not, that doesn't include the parking meters in the railroad station. So total from January, the village has made a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in parking meter revenue.
So through the end of October, you said?
That's through the end of October. So we're averaging, on-street parking meters averaging about sixteen thousand dollars, sixteen thousand dollars a month at this point. So I'm letting everybody know that.
January, January approved about seven thousand dollars?
Yeah, January, February, we were only about six, seven thousand. So in March, went up to thirteen. But during the summer, we were making about sixteen, eighteen thousand dollars.
Mr. Burke.
Good evening, everybody. I just have one thing, it's not actually in the Village of Patchar, but we had a lovely time, Paul, Jack and I, at the opening of the Swan Lake Preserve.
Yes, Swan River.
Swan River Preserve, on the Old Messenger Chevrolet, site of the Old Messenger Chevrolet dealership on Main Street in East Patchar. So if you have not been there, I would definitely suggest you check it out.[1736.73]
I'm sure it's going to be gorgeous in the spring. Most of the plantings appear to be dormant at this time of the year, but I'm sure when everything is in bloom. But it's really beautiful to see the way that the water goes right underneath the trellis and then out to the Swan River. It's just a remarkable sight and there are families there, kids on bicycles and.
Kayakers.
Yes, Peter Cotrally attempted to launch his kayak, but the water wasn't quite deep enough to get under and out into the Swan River. But at high tide, people should be able to launch kayaks and there's a beautiful, beautiful spot for that. Other than that, I just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
It's time all the way up to there.
That's pretty amazing.
It's awesome.
Yeah, you have to check it out.
I went past there at about three o'clock yesterday, they were being strolling, being pushed, bicyclists. Several cars in the little lot there, really makes a difference.
Lot of dogs.
Trusty Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, board trustees, Patty, Reed, guests. Last week, we had a meeting with some of the super tenants of the surrounding towns and villages to examine and look for advice on the, some of the restrictions that they have on parkland use specifically for our interests, short run park. And it was very interesting, a lot of the east end towns and villages restrict usage to nonprofits. They have serious restrictions as far as the number of participants and they had same on-street parking that we do, so they restrict the tenants to some of the events that they have. So we're going to be gathering this information and presenting a report to the board for possible recommendations as far as future usage. This time, we've been putting a lot of money into the park, we're planning on putting money into the ball fields and exercise equipment, and I would say that the future of large events, other than what we've contracted for and will probably bring in with a moratorium, we will not see any more large for-profit events in the park. Very concerned about that and with the board's backing, I believe that we'll be able to easily do that. Moving along, we are still looking for volunteers for the Holiday Christmas Parade. If anybody would like to help, like I explained in the last meeting, it's a great perspective to watch the children be in the parade and it really is, it's heartwarming. So if anybody would like to volunteer with lineup, crowd control, please call Luann Parks Department or just show up at five-thirty, five o'clock on Saturday night. Bring a safety vest and just help us, it's a lot of fun. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, healthy one, and see you next week.
Councilor Reed? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did he ask for approval? Justice, who's protesting? Hey, Boogie. Is Dad in Florida?
Yeah, yeah, he's not coming back here until April. He's going to Buffalo, I'm meeting him in Buffalo.
No.
December, my next, great nephew's birthday is September twentieth. Like, give me a big award in Oregon. What?
Like, reading your snowshoes.
Yeah, I'll see if the weather is like, I may not go.
Did, did they get hit very bad with it or what?
Well, no, their store was open every day, but, you know, everything else around was, my sister was in Mexico, so she didn't care. But her nice vacation.
Understand a couple of.
She knows Dad.
It's like a little jealousy, though.
Yeah, it's like, thirty-eight years, yeah. So, and listen, I'm Mark Siegel from Blum. You know, there's dental place opening, that's more people be parking.
Which dental place?
The, you see the Sloan Building?
Oh, yes, yes.
There's a lot, what?
Central dental.
Dental something clinic. And there's going to be people working there and people going there. There's going to be a lot more people parking this thing. And I think the hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars should go to a garage thing. If you get one of those and, and charge a dollar a person's car, you'll make it back, I'm sure, right?
You can charge more than a dollar.
More than a dollar, okay, fine, but it's got to be something.
We've, we've started to look at properties.
We have, yeah?
Very much so.
Okay, good, that's what I know, too. And everything else is fine, but we should be opening the back in ten days.
I'll tell you the story, the script.
Ah, it's failing.
Everybody, yeah.
Where's the sign going up on the roof?
We're waiting for Mr. Jimmy Niemeyer to do it. And it's his fault.
I think he only works two days in a week, so you gotta figure out who's two days on it.
All right, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Will it come to the public? Motion to adjourn. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Charlie, I want you to say something to Charlie.
Motion to reopen.
Motion to listen to Charlie.
Charlie, I'm, I am in Tom River Avenue, and there was some talk about some kind of government grant to assist people in interest in changing up the sewer system. I'm trying to find out any information if that's true or not.
We, we have been, I put in big quotes because I haven't seen it except heard it from Governor Cuomo's mouth, I haven't seen it on paper, that we're part of a grant program here on, we're getting eighteen million dollars to do the searing of South Patchogue. Now, they haven't told us yet whether that includes commercial residential properties, the all properties, Mudeno's district, I don't know, my sense is it'll be all properties including the residential properties, I mean, the commercial residential. And as soon as I hear something, we'll get that out.
So there's no information available right now?
Nothing, well, I have nothing more than I can tell you.
It's better to listen to rumors, huh?
The, the only rumor is, that's not a rumor, is that we have been, I put in big quotes, awarded eighteen point five million dollars to do this searing of South Patchogue. Who gets who, how's it going to be handled, how are we going to get reimbursed, is all the.
Yeah, that's why I want to come tonight, get my share, I always.
I just saw your last reporting, please.
H O B A N, hold on.
Hold on, thank you very much.
I thank you very much.
Good evening, Charlie, happy Thanksgiving.
Same here.
Comments? That one wouldn't do, Charlie.
Okay.
Second. Third?
Hi.